The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 9th, 2029. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in township offices, sent to the Courier-News on tap into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the clinch.
Right, I will now call the roll. Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mrs. Grantholm?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Melfetta? Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor?
Here.
Mr. Valentino? Mr. Weinstein? And Mrs. On?
Here.
We have a forum.
Ms. Keller.
Resolved at the Board of Education of the District Public and Private Session Minutes of the May 12th, 2025.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Right, I'll call the roll on the minutes from last meeting. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle, correspondence and information.
Thank you. The board received one email with appreciation for the district arts programming. In the HIB investigation area, there were investigations at Central and the middle school. Both were not confirmed to be incidents of HIV. And in the suspension report, there was a suspension at ALT, one at Woodland, and two at Warren Road Street.
Now, thank you, Dr. Mingle. We will now be doing our second of the 2025 year annual adoptions. Dr. Mingle, do you have anything? Hey, does any board member have any item on annual adoptions? They wish to call for a separate vote of conversation. Seeing none, Ms. Keller.
Motion to approve the annual adoption items.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I will call the roll on the annual adoptions. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
And Mrs. On?
Yes.
Right, the annual adoptions pass six zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June meeting of the Board of Education. That's it for the 2425 academic year, everybody. At least for the students, but it is, and I hope that they have a wonderful summer and enriching summer. Please read some books, everybody. The staff, the administration, and the board have already begun, and we'll be spending the summer doing lots of hard work. All of our summer work is under. So we're looking forward to a little change of pace. On behalf of the board, I want to extend our thanks to the Warren Middle School PTO for its donation of $1,500 to be used to support the purchase of classroom instructional magazine subscriptions, and which appears on the agenda tonight as item B5 for approval. Thank you very much, as always, to our wonderful people. Uh, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. On. Just to echo your comments, uh, thank you to all of our students, staff, parents, community members for a great 2024, 2025 school year. Today was the last day of school for our students and staff as well. We are back on August 26th for staff, August 28th for our students. Really only one announcement, which is for the board members tonight. Uh, the board's self-evaluation was included in my update for the board last Thursday. Uh, we asked that each person fill that out by the end of this week. The results of that information gets synthesized and brought back to the board in July as part of the board's goal setting for the 2025-26 school year. If you have any questions or need any help accessing the forums, just let me know and I can help you.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We have no presentation or discussion either this evening, so I'm going to move on to a report from board members on external assignments. Um, Ms. Dalton, I believe you have.
Um, so I attended the Somerset County Educational Services Commission meeting. Uh, it's a little bit of a mouthful. Oh, it was, uh, June 4th, um, and this was a reorg meeting. Just some brief updates. Uh, they have negotiations underway. They are going very well. Something interesting that they had recently done was, um, the kids had a, like a a career center kind of activity, uh, activities, not right word, but, um, basically, some of the older kids worked on creating a small bathroom, so they had, um, the trades come in, like electrical, tiling, plumbing, and they learned all those skills because, um, unfortunately, the VOTAC doesn't take special ed, so that was a project that they had, uh, just recently finished, and it went very well. They also had taken a trip to Sandy Hook, um, and for many of the kids, that's their only, um, beach experience. Um, and again, that was also a success. Uh, they talked about how their sports were, uh, being integrated with regular ed and special ed, and those programs were also going very well. Um, they have several construction projects going on right now. The, one of the big ones is for extra space for the counselors and administration, and that is almost completed. Sorry, my notes here. Uh, they have 60 students enrolled for their summer school this year. They recently hired a new administration team, and they're working very well. There's two vice principals and two principals, um, and they are all adjusting, and, uh, they said, working well together. Um, they're working on a new roof and adjusting classrooms for capacity as they are, um, they are very full with enrollment. And they had 165 students this year, um, and after graduation, they are expecting about 135 next year, but could get more, uh, summer.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Moving on to committee reports, there is no report for curriculum and technology. Um, the Finance, Operations, and Security Committee met June 3rd. The first item on our agenda, and we have a very full agenda, um, was the evaluation of the vendor RFPs for the food service program for this coming year. And appearing tonight on, as item B10, is the committee's recommendation to move forward with the approval of ministers as the vendor, uh, for the coming academic year. Capital project updates included PSA referendums proposals, and appearing tonight on the agenda as item B17 is the revised proposal for the referendum projects, and as item B18 is the woodland rest room proposal. We also discussed, uh, the year-end, um, uh, numbers of the surplus estimate, and that's attached to, as an agenda, to the agenda for the committee. The capital reserve transfer resolution appears tonight as item 11. The emergency reserve transfer resolution recommendation appears tonight as item 12, and the fund balance procedure updated for the next set of academic years appears tonight as item B13. We did discuss the woodland crosswalk sidewalk project. That appears on tonight's agenda under new business, so I'm going to defer and update on that until we get to new business. And then finally, the committee recommended moving forward with an approval to the full board on the garbage bid, and that appears tonight as item B16. There was a discussion regarding the deal and contract renewal. There are a couple of routes that the high school has discontinued, and those routes will be put back out for bid for us as well. And I'm building more information for you in the future. There is no readout for the personnel negotiation of the communication committees, so Ms. Keller, can I?
Yeah, thank you. The planning for growth, working group met for the first time on June 2nd. As a reminder, this is sort of a spin-off group, if you will, from the strategic planning work, which ended, I would say, the winter timeframe, and the board approved it at the May meeting. One of the pillars of the strategic plan for the next five years is focusing on addressing growth. And so this is going to be a series of meetings over the next year with a subgroup, which is comprised of board members, staff members, parents, and importantly, community members. But we thought it was very important that we are not only talking to people who are directly connected to the school, but also those individuals who live in town, pay taxes, and we want to get their perspective as well. Uh, I'm going to read the takeaways from this first session that happened on June 2nd. The sort of notes, these are captured, Dr. Mingle, that you've done a great job in sort of summarizing what were the major takeaways from this meeting. So I think it's my opportunity to just probably end right now. Uh, so special education and preschool needs. Uh, many members were surprised by the scale and cost of our specialized programs. Several asked for clearer information on what these services entail and how they impact facility planning. Growth and development trends, the projected housing growth and its uneven impact on school capacity, particularly at woodland and central schools, prompted strong interest in demographic data, occupancy trends, and township planning timelines. Strategic communication and referendum readiness. Participants emphasize the importance of messaging, community education, and early outreach. Should a tax referendum be considered? Creative ideas for campaign-style engagement surfaced. Facilities and utilization requests were made for building tours, visual layouts, and a better understanding of space usage, including for preschool, special education, and basic infrastructure such as kitchens, de-escalation rooms. Um, and then finally, a shared commitment to the process. Uh, every survey response, so at the end of this meeting, we did a, um, digital survey. Every survey response expressed confidence that participating voices will be heard and respected throughout this process. So the next meeting is scheduled for July 21st, and in that session, we'll be discussing specifically on preschool programming.
Ms. Keller, just as a follow-up, this information is also available in the website, isn't it?
Yes, we have a new section on the list.
Moving on to public commentary. Uh, at this time, um, we will open for the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand. I use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and direction. No more standing. Please know the board welcomes and encourages input from the public. Um, public commentary is an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but it is not intended as a peering in session. Following public commentary of appropriate, a presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that the comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. Looking first to the audience. Seeing none, do we have anyone in our Zoom audience that would like to address the board on the agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close? First opportunity for public comment.
Motion closed.
Second. All in favor? Close. Abstain. First opportunity for public comment is closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have anything on agenda?
No, I don't.
Does any board member have any agenda item that they would like to pull for separate conversation? Ms. Keller?
Questions, items for consideration, A1 for A5, B1 for C5, 7 for D20, C1 for E5. Oh, worse. A1 for A5. B1 for B5. B7 for D20.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll call the roll on the consent agenda. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller? Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mrs. On?
Yes.
Motion's passed six zero. Thank you.
Sorry, I, I should have said this when you gave me the opportunity before business agenda items. The item that was struck from the agenda, just for the public's, uh, knowledge, be six, which was a donation from the woodland PTO, is only removed. It will be on the next agenda when we finalize some numbers. It's, uh, that's the only reason it was struck.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We have no unfinished business on tonight's agenda. We do have a new business item, and this is the Sterling Road Crosswalk. Um, just to bring the public up to speed or remind them, this is something that's been appearing as a readout in the Finance Committee now for years. We began conversations, um, regarding the crosswalk, um, about two years ago. Uh, for reference, we're talking about, um, uh, immediately across from the school, um, the Woods at Warren, uh, development, which sits on Lindberg Road there. Um, we have young, young people, students, both in the K5 at Woodland, as well as high school age students that are crossing the road there. Anybody who's driven on that road knows that, most particularly during the times of school, um, you know, beginning and ending, it's a highly trafficked area. And the topography of the road does have blind spots, which would allow that, um, drivers to be almost on top of that intersection to see crossing. And there's no mitigability for anybody standing on the road. They're seeking to cross Sterling at Lindberg, uh, if they look both directions, looking for vehicles. It's, it's very hard to, to cross that road safely. Um, this was raised to our attention a couple of years ago, and our first responders on, on the board actually have been very proactive in uh, keeping this front and center. We have four, um, entities that have been involved in addressing what to do there. It's a county road. So we have been talking with the county, who, um, uh, I think you would be fair to say they have pledged, pledged cooperation with anything that we want to do there to address this. The town has contributed, um, in-kind services, informed their engineers, uh, to assist us in getting to the right solution. And early in the process, there was an understanding between the two, uh, boards of education. That's the Warren Board of Education here, as well as the High School Board. Uh, but there would be a share in the cost of putting a crosswalk sidewalk in at that location to provide safe crossing of pedestrians, both during school hours and during non-school hours. Um, we were advised, and we're pretty far along in the process, but we were advised, um, a couple of months ago that the high school's, uh, operations committee did not recommend approving participation to their full board, and that they were not going to proceed, uh, with assisting in the cost of putting in crosswalk or sidewalk at this location. We did invite them, representatives of the high school, um, to meet with us at site, hoping to demonstrate to them the safety concerns that we have and the need to address this. And, uh, they, they did make time in their, in their busy days to do that. The president of their board, the chair of their operations committee, their VA, their chief director of operations, joined myself, Mr. Otto, Mr. Havel. Um, representatives of the Warren Police Department were present, as was the township engineer. At the last board meeting of the high school, uh, during their readout, they confirmed what we'd been told shortly before that, and that is that they have decided definitively that they will not be proceeding to assist in the cost of installing a crosswalk inside at this location. The Finance Committee, which has been primarily, um, focused on this, uh, is unanimous in its belief that this is a critical safety issue, not just for our students, but for all pedestrians. And in fact, the high school students present a particular problem because their faces are frequently down on their cell phones, and they are less attentive when crossing that road. So, um, we are bringing it now to the full board so that the board, the full board can give us their views on on this topic. Ms. On.
Um, I've driven on that road many times, and I would agree that it absolutely is necessary, but you put something there, um, as far as a crosswalk. It, people drive way too fast down there, and especially during, um, you know, the arrival and dismissal times of the day. Um, it's definitely warranted, um, and I would just like to share that I'm, I'm disappointed to hear that the, um, John Hills Board is no longer going to help finance this, as I feel it's affecting their students as well. So I don't believe that it should be a burden that's just on our district.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Mr.?
I was just going to echo, um, what Mrs. Dalton said. You know, I think it is just, uh, frustrating and disappointing that the you know, because this is just safety of not only our children, but other folks in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton.
I would agree with most of our group, but, uh, I'm pretty sure something that was something to solve this, is not something that has been prioritized. But I would certainly think it's a good period of my life, given it's a famous philosopher, not being able to speak in his speaking booth. So we should really, I think, help you to that, because that would be a positive improvement, certainly is. It's incredible that we're two, three years of the past, but it's a good.
It has been frustrating for a ton of things.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm just gonna go, but it's just disappointing that we, again, we've also, we've been working on this for years, been transparent about decision-making. It's not easy to coordinate these organizations, and, you know, now we're in a situation, and I, again, fully support, you know, us supporting the board, but we are just, as a community, just continuing to grow. We're going to have more circumstances where we need to coordinate with different county, town, schools, and this is unfortunate. First element is really proving out, and it's not proven itself, but I 100% agree with you. It's the right thing.
Any other comments? Mr. Norwood? Mr. Otto has something to say. Tell us off for Mr. Norwood. Would it be fair then to say that the Finance Committee has the support of the board, um, in proceeding in the most fiscally responsible way possible to address this urgent, um, safety concern? Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to move on to the second opportunity for public commentary. Uh, this is the second opportunity, and it is open to any topic you wish to raise for the board's attention. Again, unless they can use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. I would say raise your hand in the audience, but we have no audience. Um, remember? Well, if you're in the audience, raise your hands. Um, remember that comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address. I'm looking first to the audience. Okay, then, looking to the Zoom audience. Last call. Hey, do I have a motion to close public commentary?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Uh, the second opportunity for public commentary is now closed. Um, Ms.?
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, 104-11, permits the Board of Education to meet with professionals. That matters now. Therefore, be involved with the Board of Education, in charge of those professional process. Specific perspective referred to please, unless all of the parties personally affected from the best open session. Good bringing up that relationship. Action will not be taken upon return of public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes. If it is further resolved, then it is possible to take up the heat of sensationality.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The board is in executive session.
Okay. Motion, motion to return to open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying. The board is in a session, in public session, and Ms. Keller?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the meeting is done. Thank you.